Everybody. I spelt M-A-R-E, I know. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to all those people who contacted me. I can assure you, I missed being amongst you all. Not a lot. But most of all, I'd like to say thank you to Don for stepping in for me. I can assure you, there was no way I could do it. But it's great to be back, whether you think so or not, down to you individuals. I'd like to start off by saying that since I've come back, I was at Remembrance Day. Struggled a little bit, but with the help of the people around me, I got through it. Also at the Tree of Light last Friday, I think it was. It was also very good. I enjoyed it. Once again, it's all those stairs they keep putting in front of me where I struggle to get up and keep feeling I'm going to fall down. But apart from that, it's good to be back. So to start off, apologies for absence. Do we have any apologists?
Yes Chair, we've got Councillors Chapman, McKay, Messant and Pratt.
Okay. Will we ever just accept it to them or?
Yeah, they're all ill health.
Right. Next one, declarations of members' interests? Any declarations?
Yes Mr Mayor. Declaration of interest in item 10, which is to do a SP upgrade.
Yep, okay.
That's a non-perky interest as a volunteer at the Health Centre.
Okay. And the next one, number three, to confirm and sign the minutes of the Crewtown Council meeting held on the 26th of September. Can I have a proposer and a second for the minutes please? Thank you Alan. Thank you Aaron. All those in favour please show. Thank you, that's unanimous. Item four, public participation. Not exceeding 15 minutes, and I understand that we do have a question.
Yes Chair, there was a question submitted and circulated with the Agenda Pact. All members had the opportunity to see it, I hope. The general topic was what does the council think about the current state of cycling provisions in Crewe and is this going to make cycling safer?
Okay. Anybody want to speak on that? Ben? What a surprise!
I just want to say, I really do feel for the writers' situation. It sounds like a young fifth man and is having problems with barriers. For me, the funding of the different kinds of cycle provision. The last one we didn't get outside the front of the station was the one that affected productivity and economic regeneration because it's how people can go out to work. And I think that was, although it was an ambitious project, I think it's a shame that it didn't go through because it would have allowed people from the West End of Crewe to get to work for free quickly and happily and be able to find. So it's a shame about that. I do think the town council should look out for these things and support not just cycling, but transport and giving people the choice of being able to travel how they want. A lot of people would walk or cycle, but they don't think that it's safe enough. So anything that we can do to support that, I think we should.
Thank you. Simon?
Thank you Mayor, a couple of things. The writer would like, I think somewhere it says if we can deal with any of the specifics that are in here. And the one that stuck out for me, of course, was around Mill Street. And of course, we're in the, I think in February, the Mill Street Corridor, the Active Travel Route. From the station down to the town centre is being considered by the planning committee. And that's something of course that the town council is part of, as part of the town board. A number of these examples, of course, are not in Crewe, are in Worcestershire. But it did strike me, clearly given the route that this person is using. Nantwich Road in January has a road surface relaying going on. And the very, very poor stuff on the road.
Just white lines.
Yeah, is going to be replaced as part of that. It doesn't give you the physical barrier, which of course is really the key standard now. But at least there's some improvement there. And again, that's another example of how we should keep pushing. We do have control of these things as a town council. Of course, but we cannot be pushed and so on.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Look, I think one point has been made already that we can support measures to make things safer for cyclists, as indeed as making things safer for pedestrians as well. As that was the plan for the Nantwich Road scheme and in years gone by, and probably elsewhere too. But the lead authority and all that is, of course, the Borough Council. So this is the sort of question specifically at the beginning, really are the good questions for the person who posed it, to put directly to the Borough Council. I mean, we could probably do the same, you know, ask them what their views might be on that. That's just a thought. And the other thought is there's lots of specific cases and they all come down to poor driving or people getting angry for no particular reason because they can't get where they want to go because cyclists are getting in the way. And I mean, that's something that one would think is a police matter as much as anything in it. So scope to make cycling safer, we can do our bit. There are other authorities that need to play their part. And that's quite a part from the whole drive to basically get traffic off the roads in the long run. So that's what we have to happen, isn't it? Thank you.
Okay. John?
Yes, it was disappointing, I thought, that the individual couldn't identify him or herself. Because it clearly would have been advantageous to be able to write to the individuals and direct them in the right way. I was always a bit dubious about people that don't actually put their name. It was on it now, I apologise, but it wasn't on the original.
One at a time please. Sorry, carry on.
It wasn't on the original. However, having rode a bike for forty some years to work, I don't ride anymore, I don't drive to work either. However, I have found in more recent years that cyclists use the pavement. And it's now becoming to me, on the main tracks, which is Nantwich Road, Ellison Road and West Street, all of which I walk down, you find that you have to move out of the way on the pavement because cyclists, for whatever reason, for whatever reason that is, and it could be that there's no cycle lanes on the roads and all of those things, but that does not give them a right to go on the pavement. And we're not talking about just ambling down and getting off when you're there. They look at you to get out of the way. And I find this more and more so. So whilst I would support anything about bikes and so on, on the road, there's no reason whatsoever because as I say, they don't just tumble on, they go at a pace.
Happened to you this evening?
And I'm getting, it's getting quite frightening, to be fair.
He was all, you know, dressed in black, black bicycle, coming along the road pavement on Victoria Avenue. Reminds me of my two dogs going, walking down the road. And it was like a standoff. I stood my ground and said, you get on the road. I said, you know, you're a bicycle, I'm a pedestrian. But he did eventually, but it shouldn't have done it maybe because he could have pulled everything out on me, but yeah.
I'm sure we can all sit down and come out with stories of being in vehicles and having confrontations with cyclists and being pedestrians and doing the same. But there's nothing we can do about it. I believe it is still illegal to ride on a pavement if there's no cycle lane. But they've got no number plate, so how can you do anything about it? Simon?
Thank you Mr Mayor, just specifically on that issue of co-riding on pavements. We can do something about it. We can continue to keep lobbying the police about taking action. I did a board walk up Nantwich Road a few weeks ago with the inspector and the sergeant at the PCSO. We stopped probably 12 people. One guy almost enjoyed His Majesty's pleasure as a result of the kickoff that he had with the cops. The only reason why, of course, it doesn't get tackled is because there isn't enough people, police on the ground undertaking the beat patrols like they used to now. The chief inspector says that they're getting more police officers from January. And I think we should continue to put the pressure on that as that happens, that we expect to see more, the return of the level of neighbourhood policing we had a few years ago.
Thank you. Ben?
With all due respect, this started off as a question about how do you support people to safe cycling. And as usual, it's turned into a roundabout cyclist. None has been killed by a bicycling crew, but several cyclists have been killed. Lots of pedestrians have been killed by motorists. Those people who cycle, it's illegal, end of. So I train people to do cycling and say, the roads are for riders, the pavements are pedestrians. Why they're on it, okay, normally it's, I just think, I'm glad you're not riding in a car because that would be death. But can we just get back to the original question, which is, you know, do we, because of course, safer cycling, the roads where you've all mentioned about where the people are paving cycling, there isn't a safe option over people who are inexperienced, or just don't care about the people. But I mean, that is the question, so I just wanted to remind people that's what the issue is.
Yeah.
I agree, but does it, what we're saying is that actually, we're all supportive that there needs to be more done for cyclists and prepared because the effect that not having safe cycle routes has on other pedestrians as well. So, you know, I'm all for, let's, you know, promote, you know, better facilities for cyclists.
If we're talking about parking, me saying drivers are always speeding, they're always running red lights. And if you go up to Gresir Road, I did recount once, it was nine times, no, eight times out of 10 in Russia, the last car going into town from Southend jumped red lights.
Yeah.
So we need to, you know.
It's illegal for anyone, whether in a bike, on a bike, in a car, to run a red light. But we could argue about this all day long or discuss it all night long, so.
If I may, if it'll help, a little summary, if I've heard everything correctly, and I apologise if I haven't. Seems that members are supportive of investment in safer cycling opportunities and active travel routes in Crewe, recognising the opportunities that we've had and not had the funding for associated with works on the Nantwich Road near the station. But there are works to be done on Nantwich Road with the relimery surfacing. Equally, Mill Street Corridor is about to go to committee for progressing. Members also expressed that it's helpful to lobby the police and seek greater enforcement and engagement with that. Does that form some part of an answer to the question?
Are we all happy with that? Yep, okay, then we'll move on. Number five, to receive updates from committee chairs in relation to meetings held since the Crewtown Council meeting on the 26th of September. And the first one, could I invite councillor Jill Rhodes to introduce and propose the recommendation of the F&amp;G Committee?
Thank you Mr Mayor. The F&amp;G Committee contributed a number of things, but amongst those were the items that you see there, the various policies, which is part of our annual review statement, were submitted to the committee. So that is the bring your own advice policy, child protection and vulnerable persons safeguarding policy, customer care policy in complaints code, crew friendship and twinning policy, general privacy notices, and the committee recommended that the council adopt these updated versions of the policy.
Thank you.
And I propose that we adopt those updated versions.
Thank you councillor Rhodes. Is there a second? Thank you Steve. All those in favour? Thank you, that's carried.
Do we not get the chance to ask a question?
Sorry.
Do we not get the chance to ask a question?
My apologies.
And twinning.
Yes, I think I'll let the cloud come through.
Okay. Well, it says in here, I just wanted somebody to tell me what was actually happening because it does mention that you welcome reports of their activities as far as CANTOR is concerned. Now, having been associated with CANTOR for two or three years from Cheshire East Council, there was no activity. So could you sort of update us on what they are actually doing now?
I can try. The twinning in Crewe is led by the voluntary sector and that's CANTOR, Crewe and Nantwich Twinning Association. And they have been across to partner cities, and I can't remember which one it was now, whether it's in Germany or Poland. They've done that in the last 12 months to visit and they're trying to arrange a return visit to Crewe for those groups, but just takes a bit of time to sort out. There was a visit to Macon in the summer and they visited on behalf of Crewe and Nantwich, we're all worried about Crewe, and made a gift or a presentation there, a nominal gift to say hello from Crewe again. Now, we do welcome reports from them, but we certainly don't enforce reports from them because they're volunteers and we just asked them if they can provide us information. At this time, we don't have a written report to share. If it were to come, it would go to the committee planning.
So basically what we're saying is that the members of CANTOR have been making visits.
Yes.
Which presumably have been funded through their own efforts to.
Yeah, quite right.
But the actual contact and return visits of the public from our twin towns, which was always a feature going back, that isn't happening anymore, as I understand it.
Well, it's for CANTOR to organise, but it's hoped that representatives of our twin towns will visit us in the summer, but they will organise that. We will support them in any way we can that is reasonable. We don't fund international transport.
No, I didn't, what I was saying was, there used to be, there used to be a lot of school groups that used to come over, from Macon and from Bishopstown, not so much from the Polish town, which I can't pronounce, so therefore I will not be generous on that. But I just wondered if that was trying to be, through them, not through us, whether that was trying to be re-initiated, but I never got the feeling that was. No, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Simon?
Thanks Mayor. It's a few years since I've had an engagement with CANTOR. They were very small in number then. I suspect that they're even smaller in number now. And therefore, I don't think we can expect there to be a lot more organisation around things that happen unfortunately. They also do not get involved in the civic side of this, which I think is a real shame. But I think that's as a result of when CANTOR, if you like, split off from being a local authority responsibility, it lost that look. I've only really been involved in Macon and twinning there is very much seen as a civic activity, a very different approach to it, I think, than there has been here in recent years. I think the only other thing I'd say about this is, well, two things. One is, I'm not suggesting twinning, but it would be a good idea to try and make continued relationship or contact with Crewe and Virginia. Particularly because of the link, Crewe Day being on Independence Day, it's a really good opportunity to make contacts. And the other comment I'd make is particularly the point in the policy about residents of Crewe from other countries. And this is actually something that Jill and I touched on on the member of Sunday, about how we ought to really try and encourage more of the community groups in the town to get engaged with that. I noticed this year the mosque didn't lay a wreath, I don't think they did last year, but they have done. And so, I mean, it's, you know, I suppose it's a bit of a campaign to try and engage with some of the other community groups in the town.
Thank you. Right, I'm sorry, is there anybody against? No, any abstentions? No? I ask carried. The next one is operations and improvement. There are no items being recommended to council from that committee this time, so those minutes are noted. The next one is marketing and events. Could I invite councillor Martin Edwards to introduce and propose the recommendations of the M&amp;E Committee?
Thank you Mayor. We've had two meetings since last full council, on the 12th of June and the 11th of September. We have one item for consideration, that the provision of an earmarked reserve is established to build a fund for the purposes of developing and delivering Crewe bicentennial events and activities. We resolved that the provision of an earmarked reserve for the purposes of delivering Crewe bicentennial events and activities is established, and this is included in the budget setting.
I'm sorry to interrupt councillor, I think you're referring back to some older notes there, that meeting held was on the 6th of November.
You had a full council in September.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the minutes from the last full council.
I'll go a little fresh in this country.
So we've got some background.
Shall we start again?
We'll start again, take two. So we met on the 6th of November. And there's two items to consider. Item number one, that £20,000 be allocated from the 2324 strategic events budget for bringing the anti-violence B to Crewe in May next year. And we recommend this to council for approval. The second item is that an allocation of £30,000 of the 2324 strategic events budget is recommended to council to sponsor Crazy Races, bringing a soapbox derby to Crewe in July 2024 to celebrate Crewe Day.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak on these items? We'll take the first one first, that £20,000 allocation. Does anybody wish to speak on it? Tony?
Yeah, I mean, I was at that meeting. Yeah, I mean, ideally, I would have liked to have done something for Crewe, not just the B, but I get that it takes time to create such an item. So it would have been nicer if we could have allocated something so then that carries on for future, so the money has more longevity. So like this is, I wouldn't say is a temporary thing, because the B is associated to Manchester, not Crewe. I would have liked, if it was possible, for us to create something that represented Crewe, so then you could then bring it out annually. And each event would have a purpose, so say, whatever we created, it would be associated to whatever was going on during that year, whatever's happened. So we could focus on anti-violence or something to do with kids or something, but it would still represent Crewe because it is us, it's about us, whereas the B is Manchester. But I get why, because we have to start somewhere.
Hang on, point of order.
I think we need to stick to the agenda, if I may suggest Chair, it may be so bold at the moment. We're looking at the recommendations, the items that are coming forward from committees that have met and had full discussions and members there have had the opportunity to make these points and a decision has been, am I right in thinking that a decision was made at Marketing Events to bring this forward, to bring item C1 forward? And at this point, there really is no opportunity for us to discuss alternatives.
Right. Thank you Steve.
Well, with all due respect, I disagree. You know, the committee has resolved to recommend to council, the decision rests with councils, perfectly plain. So I would suggest that discussion is entirely reasonable. But I was just interested to know a little bit more about the anti-violence B, what it, you know, if someone could perhaps explain a little bit about it, because I'm not familiar with that. I'd be interested to know, because I'm sure Pete McQuaid would be interested to know.
Okay. Joy?
Well, that was my first question because obviously the minutes are just very brief. So I have no idea what the Manchester anti-violence B is. I'm presuming it's going to be something along the lines of the Knife Angel, is it? It's that sort of, right, okay. So before expending any money or allocating any money to something like that, I'd like to see what return, what positive return was had from the Knife Angel. Because if we're going to expend £20,000 and bring something that is just another structure, I would want certainly a lot more information as to what we expect that investment and money to create or to bring to the town of Crewe. And unfortunately, these minutes really don't give me the background. There's no report obviously on it. And I'd say the same about the £30,000 for the Crazy Races. You know, where is this going to happen? Where are we going to have the soapboxes hurtling around, which sounds great fun.
We'll be talking about that in a minute.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
I'm sorry, I can't remember your name. Sally.
Well, this is a little bit of background. I can't give you facts and figures, but at the meeting, we did discuss how successful having Knife Angel had been. And there were a lot of activities connected to it and it was deemed to be of value to the community. Having the B is building on it. And I'm referring to what Tony said, the idea is that we make this an annual thing, which is anti-violence, which can only be good for the community. And as Tony said, something that is Crewe, well, that's what we're aiming for long term. But I think this is a step on building on that.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
If I may, when we took the Knife Angel the last day, a member of the public turned around and said to me, what a waste of time. And I said, if one knife has been handed in, then it's been a success. I said, don't go anywhere. And I went and asked the sergeant who was at the meet, you know, on the square, and I said, do you know how many knives have been handed in? And he turned around, he said, it's just under 90. So that's 90 knives that had been taken off the streets. So to me, that was exceptional. Martin, can you answer any of these questions or?
Oh, just to reinforce what's already been said, it's in the same vein of course as the Knife Angel, a much cheaper attraction, absolutely, much smaller, I'm told, not as tall or as grand as the Knife Angel. But I believe that the police have already been in contact or we've reached out to the police as well, that will be organising similar events, activities that were held back in May for the Angel.
Okay.
So yeah, just to echo what's already been said, we're going to try and build a tradition of these similar activities.
I take it that you're proposing that?
Absolutely.
Yep. So we've got a proposal, is there a second for this? Thank you Sally. All those in favour?
Are you unanimous now?
Any against? I don't think, I think everybody, that was unanimous, so there can't be any abstentions either. Right, and now the second item.
Yes, the Crazy Races, I believe again, approached the town council, offering offering to put on this event. In terms of location or logistics, I believe that's still to be agreed upon. We did discuss again during our committee meeting quite extensively this this option. And agreed, yes, as a committee, to to bring this forward to full council.
Okay. Before I ask for a seconder, does anybody want to speak on this item? Jill?
Well, I haven't brought my hand, I'm still not clear as to what this event is actually going to look like, what it includes. But I'm being asked to say yea or no to £30,000 of money being allocated, not spent, okay, but allocated, to something, I'm not clear about what it is.
All right, Sally?
I think essentially it's various community groups being invited to make a soapbox to take part in a community event.
Right, that's all I needed.
The location, there's various locations within the town were discussed. But I think the final decision has to be made in conjunction with the group that are doing it, because they know what they need.
Ben?
So, yeah, we've talked about the UTC would be right behind us. This is exactly, so it's designing technology, which is the history of Crewe, designing and building transport things. If you look at the website of the company that's doing it, they've done it all over the place, very successful. It's a big event, it's a bit like Red Bull, things like that. So it's a big community event that should attract lots of visitors. The only debate we were having really in the details was where should it be? We wanted Flag Lane if the bars were open by then, because of the time of the opening and bringing people down there. If not Broad Street, because it's near the UTC and you can use St Paul's as a base, and it ends up on that greenfield there, where they would normally have big marquees and stuff like that. So I think it it looks like a really big thing. And I think it is, it seemed to us like a good investment in terms of return, social return and economic return.
Thank you, Ben. Irene?
No, I was just going to echo what Ben said. It's not going to be just in one location. It's going to be in several places, and a lot of people are probably going to get involved in the same thing. But my fear initially was about safety. But I've been told that in every place where it's been done, there was good health safety, and they don't show us and don't tell us exactly how they are going to go without making it safe.
Okay, thank you.
I don't argue.
Go on, Tony.
I just couldn't remember if it was just a one day or a weekend event. I was at my own question. Is it a weekend event or is it one day?
One day.
One day.
Ben?
Just just as, the list of the the B, I guess, is that the Knife Angel project was active in all of the schools in Crewe. All the schools got involved in summer, the B's got involved. And the same would be true of the of the soapbox derby. You're only allowed to drive it if you're a rating, but young people can design it. So it should be like a cross-generation thing. I'm thinking, in my mind, you know, the guys who make the steam engines and stuff like that, transfer some of those skills onto young people.
As long as there's nothing like the ones I made as a kid, we'd be all right. Steve, sorry.
We'd put you down as a driver.
Yes, I'll speak to you later. Steve?
Soapbox Derby, that sounds like somebody that's must have made for politicians, isn't it?
It does, doesn't it?
What does it actually mean? Does it mean people, the idea of a sort of?
Bring advice as a policy.
Thought just crossed my mind, and I dare say, this is a first, and lots of things can be tried out. Do you, do you see, does anybody see whether there might be opportunity for groups, involving groups and schools, to make use of it for fundraising? They could talk to you about crazy racing, somebody's going to, if it's a race, somebody's going to win. You know, I wouldn't suggest we bet it or anything of that sort, but sponsorship. There's, there must be opportunities.
There are multiple opportunities for sponsorship, and they're expected to be business engagement as well.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, Jill?
Yeah, just asking, where are the minutes of this marketing and event committee? Which is 5C. In my pack, I've got 5B, and I've got 5D. No fan.
Page 37.
Page 37. Oh, I've got these ones.
I haven't got a page 37, I've got a 36 and a 39. Although actually. No, still I've got the detail, I'm actually.
Right, Martin? Sorry, just before you, does anybody else want to ask any questions? No, then Martin, please reply.
Yeah, just, I was just wanted to check with the with the clerk. The information packs that members of the committee receive before the meeting, are they circulated or mere public to everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Right, so I'll take it you're proposing that again, Martin?
Yes, please.
Do we have a seconder? Thank you, Sally. All those in favour, please show. Any against? No, I think that was unanimous, mate. Yep, thank you, that's carried. The next one is planning. There are no items being recommended to council from that committee this time, so those minutes are noted. As there were no meetings of the Community Plan Committee or the Personnel Subcommittee since last meeting the council, we're to move on to item six. Item six, to note any updates from members having attended external meetings. Are there any updates from members? Jill?
Just a quick one from the town hall. That was Friday. Looked at how all the various projects were progressing, and analysed where we looked to. And we're perhaps not spending the money as quickly as government would like us to, but the majority of the projects are progressing, and hopefully, money will be spent in time. So that basically was the, the other side is short update on the move with the police station as well, please. That, I think it was, anyway, somebody from the police came to speak to us about that, so. But that's a tale of, and tomorrow, I think myself, well, some of us have been, I don't know how it's been sent out, been invited to go to look out through consultation about the archive centre, Cheshire Stories Shared is the title, to look at the artwork that's going to go, not on the side that's by select, but on the other side of the building. So that's, that's something we'll be attending, but I don't know quite how that, if that was sent out or who received it and who didn't.
Thank you, Ben?
Sort of the next level meeting, I had the privilege of speaking for a couple of minutes on Radio Stoke this morning about the Christmas video called Christmas that was brilliantly written by a member of the town council, really creative. It's going down very, very well. I don't know whether we've got any data so far, I don't see any data, but about 5,000 people have seen it so far. So I just wanted to note, talking about that as an excuse to thank the council staff.
Okay. Right, anybody else? All right, I'll move on to item seven. Sorry, Irene?
I think Ben said something about the staff. I wonder if it can be minuted. Did you hear what he said?
I heard it, yeah. It can be minuted if you want, it's not.
No, no, no.
All right, eh?
Yeah, all sorted.
Okay, right. To note, consider and approve payments between the 1st of the 4th, 23, and the 31st of the 8th, 23, as per governance, to the value of £123,487.31, as recommended by the Finance and Governance Committee. Councillor Jill Rose is chair of the FNG Committee. Could I ask you to propose the recommendation of the FNG Committee, please?
I'm happy to propose, obviously you'll ask Mr May if anybody's got any questions.
All right, well, you. Thank you, Jill. Does anybody have any questions? No? Do I have a seconder? All three of them, okay. Take your pick. All those in favour, please show. Looks like it's unanimous. Okay, thank you, that's carried. Next item, to note the spend to date to the 31st of October, 23, the financial report, the report is for noted. Are there any questions? No? No, so. As is just for noting, we don't need to take a vote. Thank you. The next item, number nine, to consider the draft council budget and to set the precept requirement for financial year 2425, as recommended by the Finance and Governance Committee. I'll land over to the clerk to introduce this, and then open it up to members.
Thank you, Chair. This is, we start the, what do you say, the process in July. It's been to committees twice, and obviously council report. And members hopefully have had the opportunity to see it several times and inform it. We're at draft version nine, so it's gone through a form of evolution quite positively. The budget before you now, this draft, having been checked and challenged through that process, comes out within the medium-term financial plan tolerances, significantly below the tolerance, and it sits at the indicative figure of 4.99% on increase, bearing in mind inflation sits slightly above 6%.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Simon?
Could I ask, Peter, would any indication so far about whether there's an increase or a decrease in the number of properties in the tax?
Yes, there's, it's called, for the meeting and the video, it's called the tax base. It's a close phrase, and there's a marginal increase in the tax base this year. In 2022, we saw a decrease, 2023, we returned to the original figure prior to that, and now there's been a slight increase. The expectation is that it will increase again next year on the completion and the delay it takes those to come through the system of developments.
Okay, thank you.
Any more? Need a proposer, Philip? Sorry, sorry, Jill?
Can I propose that, just a short statement? The precept that council's suggesting has been very carefully worked out to allow the council to carry on its general business. This is lower than inflation, which is 0.6%, and we are expecting a salary rise for our officers around 6%. So for the second year in running, we have actually had a precept rise lower than inflation. And the council fortunately has been able to take on these these rises without having to raise the precept to the level of inflation. And we understand, it shows our flexibility and understanding of the cost of living pressures on our residents. And we're very mindful of cost of living pressures on residents. This precept rise in real terms will mean a rise of £4.39 per year for a Band E property, which is obviously less than £5 a year if you're Band E. Majority of properties in Crewe are Band A or Band H. And for a Band A property, it's £2.93 a year. So we're talking about something, a rise of less than a cup of coffee in one of those famous coffee shops in Crewe. So we are aware that we need this thing. Council has proved that it has a mission to provide for residents, and we provide a variety of events, particularly since November, with Remembrance, the Tree of Light, and the Christmas lights switch on. And those events are aimed at residents, and lots of residents actually attend and respect those events that are provided. We've continued with our support to community groups with grants, and those grants can cover all age ages of the population in Crewe. And we've also been providing for young people and adults by upgrading the parks that are not a part of the Cheshire East scheme. So, and we've also invested in keeping the town tidy as much as possible with the Rangers with the help of ANSA. So I'd like to recommend that the council accepts the recommended precept to enable us to continue the work we've been doing for the past. And you?
Thank you, Jill. Any questions, Steve?
There's a question. I'm happy to second that proposal, and just say a few words. I know you're, you're all shrink back now, I've got just a few words, though. And it's quite simply this, that Jill, Jill has covered the most important matters. That basically we are continuing the sort of work we've been doing, been one or two provisions, notably, for example, the support that we're offering next in the future for the library. And this is if you like, I've got an eye really, myself, to future years. And I think we all need to have an eye to what happens in the years after 2425. Because what, we're basing our calculations on what we know. But the great unknown, of course, is what's going to happen at Cheshire East Council? What sort of services might, might be depleted or cut altogether? And that will be a big question for this this council and many other councils, local councils to consider, what do we do? What do people want us to do, to conceivably, to support services which otherwise might vanish altogether or be severely cut? So that is a thought for the 2526, 2627. It definitely is, and that is, I'm just urging all colleagues on this council to bear that in mind, because the time to start planning the 2526 budget, I'd suggest, is pretty well now, or shortly, very shortly, to think about, and to keep an eye on what's happening out there, what happens in about three months' time when Cheshire East Council and others have done their work. In the meantime, we are continuing, we're continuing some valued services, such as, notably, the Rangers, you know, the street planting aspects. But there may be calls upon councils like the town council to step in in the future. So having just made that point, and I think it's important that we bear this in mind, I'm happy to second the proposal that Jill's put. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody else wish to ask any questions? No? Martin?
Just another comment. I've been a member of this council now for just over two years, and I'm proud to be a member. I think the increase in in a precept, if it enables us to continue our good work, I'm all for it. And, yeah, it's been an interesting two years, but I think we all work well together. We function well. And again, if those funds that we can, we can generate helps us keep working together, I think, yeah, I'm all for it.
Thank you. When you consider that the rise is less than 50p a month, I think the, I think we've all done very well. I don't include me, I mean, the committees have done very well, along with the clerk, to to keep it like that. So, all those in favour? I think that's unanimous. So there's nobody against? Right, that's carried. Item 10, to note the UKSPF grants update and approve the associated spend as recommended by the Finance and Governance Committee. I'll land over to the clerk to introduce this and then open it up to the members.
The UKSPF grants scheme is a central government grant scheme that has been. The UKSPF grants scheme is a central government grant scheme that has been placed with Cheshire East Council to administer and oversee. There was a call for expressions of interest in late August, and they were submitted for the middle of September. It has been previously reported, this council, we submitted three expressions of interest and two were successful, and they've been awarded a total of hundred and thirty five thousand pounds. The Economic Committee has seen those, and the grant offer is relating entirely to the grant applications, one being for ninety thousand pounds, that is associated with arts development and arts trail installation and engagement and building the arts opportunities in Crewe. The second being a feasibility study for Crewe Heritage Centre with the principal aim of finding a way of securing significant funding to help develop that into a modern heritage attraction offer. The council, for the purpose of proper governance, is asked to approve that we can accept a spend these grants as per the terms of the grants. So that is the applications that were submitted in September.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Simon?
Comment really, Mr Mayor, I think the council needs to congratulate the clerk and his staff, this is an incredibly complex process for obtaining this particular grant, another example of local authorities having to beg and bounce around for pots of money. This scheme was run in a completely different way from all the other schemes, but that isn't strange either, now about these pots of money. But the other thing is how successful the Town Council's been in getting two out of the three pots. And the reason why it's successful, the reason why I argue that this has been a great success, is because all the messaging was Crewe has already had enough through these pots of money, isn't it about time other parts of Cheshire East got a bite of the cherry? And indeed, that is the case in terms of the distribution of this money, Cheshire East wide. But for Crewe and this Town Council to be able to win the size of the grant that it has in this fund is absolutely spectacular.
Thank you.
It really, really is, against all odds. And if anybody says that, you know, argued that there shouldn't be a Town Council, or that the Town Council doesn't do anything, here are some really good examples of this would not have come to Crewe if it hadn't been for the efforts of this Town Council.
Simon, if anybody says that, let me, I'll give them your phone number. Is it? I do apologise. Ben?
Just a small point, just the idea of setting up a permanent place specific arts trail in the Town, Arts Council, I think that's a very timely, that's a likely welcome.
Thank you, Ben. Don?
Now, just a comment, we get late into what Jill says about the meeting that she's going to tomorrow about the artwork and linking that with this bid of the Heritage Art Trail, let's not miss the opportunity of making sure that we're not at cross purposes.
Thank you. Jill?
I think it's very complicated because we've got, the Archives Centre being run between Cheshire East and Cheshire West, it kind of is sitting on its own, so there are people from Cheshire East feeding in, but I take on board what you're saying, I think, you know, the mayor needs to make sure that.
I'm not sure what the other is doing.
Or not knows what the other is doing, yeah.
This morning, the Mayor's PA contacted me and asked me if I was available to go to the Alex for an art exhibition on the fourteenth, and this has come up tonight. Those of you who know me know that I've got absolutely no idea what a good painting is or what isn't, but my wife would like to go, so we are going. Not that I'm under the thumb, you're lying, anyway, but it seems good to me that the two things come up on the same day. So, is there any more questions? Sorry, are there any more questions? No?
Yes, I've seen the information, it's just reminding, I think I'm talking about right thing now, in that we received information about this meeting that you're going to tomorrow, is on the agenda the naming of the Heritage Centre.
I think there's contributions to what we would think it should be named.
Yes, because I think.
Named it too. Named a near two sets.
But there's been strong suggestions from the Town Council that Dorothy Flute's memory should be. I think there's, I think that's going to have to go through the relevant committees, the Cheshire East, Cheshire West. And there has been talk about naming rooms within the building, rather than giving the building itself a name.
Yeah, that's.
So you have got, within the building, you've got a chance to have more than one name. And I think probably Dorothy would appreciate some, her name being associated with that building in some way.
Thank you. Steve?
I think they speak to it tomorrow, is it two o'clock in the afternoon in the morning? If I'm not mistaken, it's something organised by the Cultural Forum, the Creo Cultural Forum, who's had an address list of miscellaneous people, I certainly received it myself, because I've never taken myself off the address list. And yeah, it seems to be about branding and naming, and I think it does make the point somewhere about being cautious about, you know, the name of a building, whether it's after one person or somebody. And I'd just sort of declare, if you like, that a few months ago, when we were still on the Borough Council, I think it was the last meeting of the Economy and Growth Committee back in March, something of this, you know, something came up about the Archives, and I opened my mouth, and so I said, oh, it'd be a good idea if, didn't it, if the late Dorothy Flute would remember. I think my leader suggested it was named after her, now that's another matter, and certainly that probably will have to go through the due process. But I'd certainly support that point, that it would be good in some way, just, well, that could be fed in tomorrow, can't it, that she and others could be recalled, remembered by the naming of rooms or whatever.
Thank you, Steve. Can I have a, oh, sorry, John?
Yeah, it's just, you know, bit grounded here. I'm not, I've not been confident about anything being finished in Crewe, and I think I've got some history of that, you know, we're going to have this, we're going to have that. So can we just park what we're going to call the room, or the building, until such time as it's actually nearly finished, and we get confidence and, you know, I go away strong in fact.
I have a suggestion, Mr Mayor, the John Rhodes multi-storey car park.
I will be proud to put my name to that.
Very open.
We've got that, you know, despite everybody in the town saying, we don't really want it, well, hopefully, if you look one turn, we will have car parks in the town because we'll actually have a living on the car.
Absolutely.
Which is a positive, so it'll regenerate the town centre, so we will be able to go through multi-storey. And so therefore, when you come, when our successful theatre, where people come from out of town as well as in town, they will absorb the park in a very short walk, however, if you need to have a disabled, then there is a question mark about parking, however, there is nothing wrong with that. I do not want to undermine him anywhere, or any.
Thank you, John.
I just do this, I just do this out of the goodness of my heart.
We accept that with all subtlety.
It's a tiny reminder, the heritage policy about Blue Park, it's got some really good guidance about who you should name things after and when, so I would be minded to look at that.
Okay, thank you. I think we've had enough questions and answers on that, so can I have a proposal that we accept this? Thank you, Jill, and the second of Ben? Thank you very much. All those in favour, please show. That's unanimous? Sorry, sorry, one abstention, sorry, yeah. That's carried. Number eleven, member items. Councillor Simon Yates, Crewe Town Council's role in the Town Centre regeneration. I'll hand over to Councillor Yates to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I wrote this paper back in September, and I thought it was apt at the time, how wrong can we get? So since September, we've had HS2, we've had the Royal Arcade, we've had the levelling up bid turned down by government. Crewe's been pretty well abandoned, hasn't it, for the last couple of months? And despite everything that has been going on, and which there have been some good things, what it really does now is draw attention to the fact that there's got to be some new thought and some new solutions. When I wrote this in September, this was about the town centre, we're now talking about the town, aren't we? Because the impact of, well, particularly HS2, impacts on the whole of the town, and indeed wider than the town. Obviously, there are things happening at the moment which are changing the scenery, if you like. The fantastic news on Friday about business improvement district, being voted for, thanks to the efforts of the clerk and his officers, who worked really, really hard to deliver that. The news also a couple of weeks ago, and Jill referred to it before, about the police station, and the, if you like, the move out from the centre of town of the bulk of the police force, the renewed interest now in the developments in Basford East, and of course, the North West Crewe package is well on its way to changing things. So your position of the town is changing, some things are pretty grim, and some things are looking up. There's an urgent need though now, I think, for a new plan for Crewe, and if there's any criticism of what has gone before, is the extent to which Crewe and Crewe's people have or have not been involved in the determination of what happens in the town. Having, you know, the Town Council's been in operation for ten years, we can all remember when suddenly the Lifestyle Centre was announced, or the UTC, or, you know, what's going to happen, the library flagline, that. Developments that have proved to be good, or what's been wrong is the lack of local engagement in what that was all about, the reason for it, and what needed to be done. So we've got to try and encourage, I think, a new approach to this, which brings about a top-down as well as a bottom-up approach to how the town should develop. Now, the Town Board discussed this at its last meeting, and is keen to engage with everybody in the town. We've been trying to push this, exactly this same line with Cheshire East, but the clerk has written on behalf of the Town Council about the importance of the Town Council being at the centre of any consideration for the future. The town, when the master plan for Cheshire East, the original master plan for Cheshire East was determined, whenever, about eight, nine, ten years ago, the Town Council either wasn't in existence, or was not allowed to be part of the discussion. We've got to make sure that it is in a very different position this time round, because we are representing at a very local level the people of Crewe, we're going to try and make sure that as a new plan is put together, and it needs to be, that we're engaging with local people as much as we possibly can do. Three years ago, when Jill and I joined the Town Board, one of the major problems then was the lack of airplan, the lack of, if you like, oven-ready shovel-ready projects that could be moved on, and again, we've got to try and get the town into a position where we can respond, hopefully, to a much improved position when we get a new government, and have something which is there and ideas that are in place that can be moved on as soon as resources become available. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Simon. Are there any questions?
Sorry, Chair, members, to put these two events, if you haven't got a report on this, so I apologise on that, although Councillor Yates has put forward the thoughts and considerations in this. The representations informally that I've made to Cheshire East to gauge value include reference to a formal master planning. Now, master planning as a phrase can often make us exhale in sadness because of how little effect or value we perceived in the past, but a master plan for Crewe, and I'm talking about the municipality of Crewe and those it serves around it, would have value in a planning context, in that we will have a local plan reviewed soon by Cheshire East, and making Crewe central to that process would have a value. Ensuring that master plan was directed with a Crewe focus rather than a corporate focus that might have to have a more disparate option would be of value. And it will also give greater direction to that engagement that Councillor Yates speaks of, with local people, making sure that what is said by locals is reflected within such a thing. And what I'm speaking of now as a master plan is an expensive and in-depth process, and it may not be exactly what Councillor Yates is referring to, but it is something I think I will have to bring to members at some point in the future as a recommendation with some understanding of the significant cost, but without wishing to pick holes, unfortunately, I don't feel that Cheshire East would be in a position to fund such a thing anymore, or for the time being, shall I say, to be fair on them. And it would be a consideration of this council, whether it was willing to put in place the resources to make that happen for the period that was required, to make Crewe central to the planning process, but also to give structure to the plans that Councillor speaks of or any other strategic bodies such as Cheshire East that hold this council or any of our strategic service delivery partners, police, emergency services, things like that.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I mean, it's just one question, actually, to the clerk, to clarify this. The reference to a master plan, are we actually talking about a neighbourhood plan? Not a neighbourhood?
No. As a parish authority, you are in a position to seek to provide a neighbourhood plan. A neighbourhood plan was never designed for a municipality of the scale of Crewe. It can be done, it can also be done as neighbourhoods within a municipality, and done as sections that, that have not been seen to be desperately effective where that has been tried, the largest ones have generally been refined away to nothing. A master plan is, that I'm speaking of, I mean, I'm not wishing to put words into Councillor Yates' mouth, is a formal document that can be adopted into planning policy, but can also form projects and investments into infrastructure and rail, into businesses, logistics, lifestyle aspects, welfare and health, for example, the town is desperately in more health aspects, whether there's leisure needs in terms of greater green spaces, all those sorts of things, and then obviously the aspects of retail and town centre development, and what that may or may not look like. But it's the broader town master plan, to look at all of those interactions at schools.
In effect, you're talking about something like a neighbourhood plan across, because neighbourhood plans, in the planning context, are a material consideration for planning.
A master plan becomes policy.
Something more than that, because I know that neighbourhood plans, as we know, are subject to a fairly detailed and extensive process anyway, aren't they, for parishes and for life? But this is, so it's something more than that, but at the end of it all, the object is to get it in the centre of things as an. as a, as a key consideration in the broadest sense for planning.
What I've done is I've hijacked councillor Yates's item here, so I wish, I just want to throw in his relevance rather than take oversight policies.
Sorry. Marylin?
Just while, when we're raising neighbourhood plans, and I do believe that when towns are looking at doing neighbourhood plans, they were in effect called town plans, that this council did receive a presentation from the town clerk at Winsford Town Council in about 2016, I think it was. And at that time, the council was looking at the possibility of doing more of a neighbourhood plan type thing. And having gone into it and researched it, the council at that time did decide it wouldn't be appropriate. And, and so I've certainly been at various meetings in the last two, three years, possibly when Cheshire East have come to talk to the planning committee of the town council about various developments, where there has been a call for a strategy across all these different strands of, of developments and projects. So I think, I think that we are, the council previously haven't looked at it, and more recently haven't looked at it, you know, would, has certainly, it appears to me that generally we would be in favour of looking at that further.
Thank you, Marylin. Simon? Sorry, Ben?
Thank you. So I think as Mike Tyson says, a good box has got a plan until somebody punches it in the nose. So stuff happens to Crewe, doesn't it? And so, yeah, I absolutely agree. We need a master plan because, because of the history, we haven't had one. We've got like four different town centres. There doesn't seem to be any connectivity. We've been at the mercy of events through history. So we've had, ever since I've been here, there's been endless consultations and there's been loads of stuff happening. But I think as an ordinary resident, you don't see the, the link between those two things. I'm sure there is, but whatever happens, the consultation or the planning has to have some direct linkage with something that's happening. So at the moment, we've got Westfields as be closing down, council headquarters in Sandbach, and a lot of people will be moving into Crewe or Conventon, I think, or Matson. So we will suddenly get a load of people stooging around at lunchtime, wanting to spend their dinner money locally, and bringing footfall back into the town. So we need to grab that opportunity. We've got Leyton having this rebuilt, and we've got a piece of virgin land here. And one of the main things that brings footfall into a town is GP services and things like that. So they used to, where I used to live, there was a little cottage hospital that used to get all your blood tests and all the diagnostic stuff that could easily be done outside Leyton, saving you the trouble because you've got the bus station there, you have got links from the train station. Whereas Leyton, if you don't have a car, it's really difficult to get to. I'm not going to mention the secret on this obviously, because cycling is not for everyone, I don't know.
So, sorry. Are you talking about Leyton Hospital?
Leyton Hospital. So you've got, you've got land in the middle here. So, so one of the things that might come up through this is, is setting up a, a health provision in the town centre that, that means people don't have to go all the way to Leyton. And the other thing, I, I, I've got, I've got learned stuff inside information on this. My, my, Cheshire East is, is asking for some sort of compensation package for all the money we spent on HS2. Now, that's bound to cut, if, I'm sure it will happen, it was bound to come to Crewe. So suddenly, with a big pot of money and the danger to balance the board, it will just... I don't think the residents would, I think, if we think we're going to get a big bang for a something, then I don't want to just spend on some, oh, quick, we've got to spend this money before the next April. It should be part of a serious, long-term planning.
Can I just, can I just say, Ben, can I borrow your crystal ball later? Please.
You can.
Cheers, mate. Sorry, Martin?
Thank you. Yeah. I'm not so optimistic about money coming our way. As, as mentioned, money's been taken away at time and time again. I, I don't think we should plan that we will receive any, any help. I think we should think of looking after ourselves. The item refers to retail a lot, and I think we all have to face the fact that the culture of retail has changed over the last 10, 20 years. It was the Black Friday sales a few weeks ago, and I'm sure most of us made online purchases. Few of us went into, into a stall. As, as a, as a town, as a town, I mean. I think that the retail park has detracted or pulled away from the town centre. And perhaps we should think away, away from retail. Perhaps we should think of food and drink. The success of the food hall, market hall behind us or in front of us. That's a small little enterprise, but it's been successful. I think it can, it's a demonstration of perhaps the appetite for more of those types of places to visit and eat and drink and have a good time. So I think, yeah, my two points are that we should not rely or depend or hope for any outside help, and that we should maybe think away from shops and more into restaurants, cafes and pubs, drinks, bars. Thank you.
Steve?
It was just, it was just an observation, a factual one. Excuse me. Ben was talking about Cottage Hospital. It is a fact that there's a planning approval would have been given for a medical centre on Market Street, just round the corner, you know, which, which should be, which will some, in some way, no, that would be private. You know, it's, it's stated, it wishes it, it's aiming to supplement services offered at Leyton Hospital. So it's already started, in a sense. It's not the same as a cottage hospital or, or whatever. That's it.
Yep. Yeah, Tony?
I was picking up from what Ben said.
Oh, right, Steve. Simon?
I, I agree that really, if anything, it's a good idea, like you say, with the transport situation for Leyton Hospital. We know some of the buses are stopped, so if, if any funds were available. But I also agree with Martin, putting on funds because that's the case. But also, another approach about retail. I mean, yeah, there is a lot of online shops, but if we can get, and I don't know what the approach is and if there's a different approach to that, because everybody would go into Primark. Of course they would. They would. If they were, well, the Yorkshire's would, the Yorkshire's would then. But what I'm saying is, it would bring momentum to the town.
But Primark won't come to Crewe.
No. Well, I mean, I think, I don't know. I mean, the question is, it may not. And they won't. So definitely not.
Cheshire East won't pay the five million quid, quite rightly, for, and give them X years of business rate and rent.
Is that what you're asking for? I didn't realise. That would be a disgusting question. I don't know.
There is another reason.
How many times it is put out there on public media? Nobody reads it. Nobody believes it. We have been approached and they won't come.
What a shame.
The other reason is because it would interfere with Chester and Handley, where they've got two offices or shops down. So, sorry. Simon, does anybody, sorry, before you do, Simon, does anybody else want to ask Simon any questions? Ben, please.
Thank you, Ben. Right, a number of things that come out, come out through that, out of this. If we pick up the, the master plan concept, I looked at a master plan for Cheshire East a number of years ago. I don't think we ever actually saw the end of it. However, what did come out of it was the idea of quarters in the town. So actually, what we already now have in terms of a civic and cultural quarter came out of that work, which is why the history centre is going to be where it is, the work, why, why the Lifestyle Centre is where it is, and so, and so on and so forth. You know, there, there have been things around trying to bring together different bits of the town. So the Market Hall, which actually the delivery of that was led by this town council, right, has turned into an absolutely stunning success, and, and has helped to do what it was aimed to do, which was to try and link Retail Park with the, you know, the, the old town centre. Martin, right, retail as it was is dead, but you go in that retail park and it's buzzing. And there is something about what they have been able to do in that business park, whatever the business model is that they use, is incredibly successful. Now, the, the, the old Borough Council always had a lot of criticism for putting that retail park there. It's not an out-of-town retail park, it's an over-the-bridge retail park. And if that hadn't been done, Crewe's retail park would have been out of town. Okay? So, so eventually, that's coming home to roots, which is why the Earl Street Bridge is a pain in the backside. Because if you didn't have the Earl Street Bridge like it is, then actually, the retail park would be part of the town centre. Right? So we, we have to, I think that the future is going to be around retail where it, where it now is, and the town centre being much more about leisure and, and stuff like that. Now, the old Royal Arcade scheme, which has now of course gone, was never particularly that exciting. It included quite, quite an element of retail, which right from the beginning was, is that really going to come off? But of course, that, the private sector investors were saying, you do, you build it round the cinema and, you know, all the things will come. But clearly, that's gone now. And, and so the answer's got to be coming up with something new, building on what, what we've already got, and, but trying to create something which gives much greater value. John made the point about people coming and living in the, in the town. And of course, when the Mollison Street Car Park is finished, and all being well, and Chester Street and Delmead Street car parks are converted into housing, we start to bring life back into the, to the town again. Points have been made about, about things like healthcare and so on in the town. And certainly, I mean, the presentation that the board got from, is it Matt Atkinson, on Friday, about, about, about health in Crewe was, was stunning in its, in the messages that he got from it. But he, you know, he was making the point quite, on several occasions, was dealing with health is not about bricks and mortar. It's about living conditions and it's about all sorts of other things which improve people's health. So any, any plan for the future is going to take into account of, of that sort of thing. I've heard now at the moment is, because it's, it's very easy to jump into the solutions rather than, than, than put, if you like, the package together. Where we are at the moment is, is, what I'm pushing for really in this paper, is that the town council as a body is, is saying, we are in this. It's not, we, it's no longer we want to be allowed into the room or to sit at the table. We've got to be part of it. And by, you know, and I, and I think we can do that because the town council's demonstrated over the last few years that when it is allowed in to discussions, it makes a real difference and brings about some real change and success. So I think that's the first point, being recognised as, as an equal partner alongside Cheshire East and others, that, that we use that then as the means of, of widening, if you like, the, the electorate, the constituency that gets involved in the discussion.
Thank you. Jill?
I'm just going to make the proposal. I propose that the town clerk has permission to go and speak to Cheshire East around the master plan for Crewe, and that the clerk investigates the cost of producing the master plan, and then that returns to council as, as a paper. I don't know how, I mean, I'm, so that's the proposal, that the clerk negotiates with Cheshire East around the master plan, and the clerk looks about how much it might cost to produce a master plan or a version of the master plan, or what is economically viable.
Mike, you suggest I, suggest I'm accompanied by a lead member to give it oversight and scrutiny?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Mike, you suggest he, that might be?
Glad to have Simon Yates.
Yep. Right. You've heard the proposal. We're worried about who it's going to be. Certainly, yes.
I'm just worried, and rightly so, about outsourcing to a master plan, in other words, employee, employee, an outsourced company to, to then come up with a master plan for Crewe.
We, we haven't decided that yet. We're just looking at how much it will cost. We've not said anything. We're just looking at costs and what, and options. We're not, we're not committing to anything.
Okay. You've heard the proposal. Do I have a second, then? Sally, Marilyn, Alan, take your choice, Steve.
Can I just ask? It's about Simon's proposal that's, that's on this paper. What's, what's, what's we doing on that? There's a proposal there on this paper. Martin has said a thing, that the council will resolve to do this then.
Do we, sorry, do we need a proposal? Why it's...
If, if, if we made, made for clarity.
Thank you.
For clarity, you have a proposal and a second, then?
Yep.
Unless there's any amendments or discussion that actually then moves the vote, there can be further proposals as long as they're not contrary to the core proposal.
Okay. Right. So, sorry, Jill proposed it. Who seconded it? Sally? Right. So are we all in favour of that proposal? That's unanimous again. As for what Simon was talking about.
Yes, sorry, then you got Steve, Steve asking, is there a further proposal from Simon?
Right.
And I would suggest these, these three things, amending number two now to, in regard to the town as a whole, which is really what we've, we've already agreed.
Yep. Okay. So are we all in favour of that?
On the second, if you will.
Thanks. You'll have to excuse me. Everybody else does. Right, it's been proposed and seconded. Look, are we all in favour? Yeah? That's unanimous again. So, as for who does it, I'm sure the, the committee that's due to discuss this will come up with someone, whether or not it's going to be the full council that does it or not. Or someone can give me some advice.
It will be full council because that's the format, so the council that hears the reports.
Right. So that will be the next meeting?
If, if I can, if I have a meaningful report, it will be, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Right. Thank you to Simon for that. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to note the next meeting of council, which is the 26th of March 2024.